Good evening. We'll call to order the El Dorado City Commission Meeting for July 16th, 2019. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation. We have Major Eric Johnson of the Salvation Army to lead us in the invocation.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the commissioners that are willing to serve your community of El Dorado. We ask that you would guide their decisions, that you would bless their endeavors, Lord, as they try to do the best they can for this community. Thank you for this opportunity that you can govern us through others that are willing to serve. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Next is invocation. Or skew by, we've done that. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. We have special guests today to do our Pledge of Allegiance. The Daisy Scout Troop 41235. Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Tabitha will hand you the microphone. If you would, tell us your name.
Natalie.
Arabella.
Janessa.
Elizabeth.
Glenn.
Sophia.
Shelby.
Right, thank you. Do you want to lead us? Turn around and you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If all of us, if you all join us, please?
You guys start. Turn around and face the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Good job.
Thank you to the Daisy Scout Troop of 41235. Yeah.
Yeah.
Next was personal appearances. Having none moved to public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission?
There doesn't look like it.
Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Items on your consent agenda were in the packet sent last week. Anybody have questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Not having any old business, we'll move to new business. Special use permit for rezoning application on South Haverhill.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the city of El Dorado received a request from Magellan Midstream. Uh-oh. To rezone and also ask for a special use permit on the property here bounded by the yellow line. This property is located within the county, so our ETJ with the county did take effect. You can see where the subject property lies within the city of El Dorado. We do have the city limits that borders it directly to the south and west as well. Current zoning around the subject property. Butler Community College is zoned office institutional. You have AR, which is agricultural residential. That is what the current zoning is on the requested rezoned property today. I-1 industrial to the south and residential on to the east. Its current use today is industrial use of nature. It has been for a number of years. There is currently four storage, fuel storage tanks, and the property requested for the rezoning is 19 acres. And then there is allowed today what type of uses could go on. Proposed uses, they're proposing a gasoline storage tank, Magellan is. It is going to be about 90 feet high with all of the antennas and apparatus on top of it and 62 feet in diameter. Here's a layout of where the, the tank would be located. Haverhill Road is along my cursor there to the west. There is an entrance back into a Westar substation and the existing tank farm off of Haverhill Road. Just to the, this is entrance road is just to the south of the old drive-in theater property. This is what the, the tank Magellan is requesting to put in would look like. The Butler County Commission reviewed this case on June 25th and voted five to zero to, to declare that's within the scope of the county's comprehensive plan. The planning commission held their public hearing on June 27th and voted six to zero to recommend approval to you all at the city commission level. With the rezone, it kind of puts the land into what it's currently being used today. The special use permit, it will just tie to this one tank. So if there's additional tanks in the future, that would be another review process. Notifications were sent out to all property owners within a thousand feet of that 19 acre parcel. Stand for any questions you may have.
One tank, right?
Yes.
That's all that we're allowed?
Uh-huh. And, and that's all they're requesting.
Okay. So they'll have to come back if they want to add more?
Sure. Yep. Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a... A total, like a saturation point? I mean, like can they put a tank right next to a tank, right next to a tank within, you know? Can they fill that thing up and still be within some sort of compliant? I mean... I just see a lot of space in the other tanks. And if you look at the bigger overall picture, you're seeing that some of those, a lot of those tanks in, in the area are not right next to each other. So I'm just trying to understand the future.
Sure. And, and by no means am I extra in the industry, but, you know, they do, I, they're a highly regulated industry. They do have to keep berms and protection around those tanks if there was a leak or something, so they have to be able to contain all of that. And Greg, you may be able to add something.
Well, usually, I had to put, when, when I was doing that, I don't know if it still is, but it used to be 130 percent of the largest vessel in the berm. So if you had four tanks of four different sizes, you had to have 130 percent of the largest one. I don't know if that's still the way it is today, but back when.
Assuming they already own the 19 acres?
They do not. It is owned by Fred Krupp. It's leased. It's leased.
And he has no objection?
No.
Was he the applicant, since he's the landowner?
Yeah, and Magellan was their representative.
Any other questions? I think for the interest of the public, I'd like to read the conditions for the zoning ordinance. Special use permit, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. The, the six criteria that to, to, to consider when making the decision. Location and size of the proposed use is in relation to the site and to adjacent sites and uses of the property, and the nature and intensity of the operations proposed thereon. The response from staff is proposed use is gas and fuel storage similar to what is currently occurring on the site. The proposed and current site uses, use occupies 50 to 60 percent of the property with the rest remaining vacant and undeveloped. The subject property abuts gas and fuel storage to the east, a cemetery to the south, educational institution across South Haverhill to the west, and electronic, an electric substation, enclosed drive-in theater to the north. Speaks to compatibility. Access to the property to police, fire, refuse collection, and other municipal services. Adequacy of ingress and egress to and within the site, travel flow and control, and the adequacy of off-street parking and loading areas. Response is the site is accessible by emergency vehicles. Off-street parking areas are not required. Utilities and services, including water, sewer, drainage, gas, and electricity, with a particular reference to the location, availability, capacity, and compatibility. And the response is, the city has water capacity along Haverhill Road. No sewer connection is needed nor available. Next is the location, nature, and height of the structures, walls, fences, and other improvements. Their relation to adjacent property and uses, and the need for buffering or screening. Response is the property currently has four large fuel storage tanks measuring approximately 100 feet, 130 feet in diameter, approximately 50 feet in height, located on the rear or east portion of the property. Magellan is proposing the addition of a single new spherical gasoline storage tank measuring up to 90 feet height and 62 feet in diameter. Adequacy of required yard and open space requirements and signed provisions. The proposed site plan meets the setback requirements of the district, is the response. Lastly, the general compatibility with adjacent properties, other properties in the district, and the general safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of the community. Response is the proposed land use is in, is an expansion of the current gas and fuel storage use to the south and east and is consistent with the land uses along the east side of Haverhill Road. The proposed addition will include a pump similar to those on the existing tanks that will create noise no louder than the existing sound levels. Due to the height of the proposed structure, additional buffering, screening, and landscaping is not likely to reduce its visual impact of a new large tank. Any questions or comments on those, those criteria? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Order's noted.
There are two for this. It's 1306 and 1307, and there will be a roll call vote after this.
Let's see.
Just to clear the requirements that you've read off, for the SGP not rezoning.
That's correct.
There's a second criteria.
For the SGP, yes. That was for the SGP, not the rezoning.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved in second. Any further?
No, we haven't.
No, it hasn't happened yet, does it? So...
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve case number 1904, SGP, and case number 19-02, REZ, requesting the SGP for a new gasoline tank up to 90 feet in height and rezoning to a I-1 light industrial district. And then ordinance number 1306 and ordinance number 1307 be approved.
Sorry.
Okay, so we moved in second. Any further question? Two roll calls? Or just a, a, a motion approved for five, a, a general motion and then roll call after that?
Because it was read as one motion, we'll do one roll call vote unless somebody votes no, and then we'll go back.
All right.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. That concludes our new business. On our agenda. Short night tonight. We move to commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report.
I was just going to say they're calling for some pretty hot weather this next week and a half, so... Again, check, check on your neighbors and keep an eye out for animals that don't have shade and water. I think we've got no tether ordinance now, don't we? So they can't...
For, it's for a certain amount of time that they're allowed in.
Yeah, so, yeah, if somebody has, has a dog tied up out in the yard all day, that's against the law, so... Don't hesitate to make the city aware of that.
And don't forget the kids in the car.
The kids in the car.
Make sure you take the kids out of the car.
Oh. My kids can get out, my themself.
Well, hopefully mine can too.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on the honor camp. Is there anybody we can talk to about mowing that and making it look better out there as your entrance to our lake? You drive by that and the weeds are almost as tight of tall as the building now.
Yeah, I'm sure we can raise the issue with the department corrections and kids bother in parks. And then they've bailed a portion of the property, but they haven't, they haven't done it all, so I don't know what their arrangement is, but we can definitely bring that up to their attention.
I got nothing to say.
I just don't really have a whole lot of, and I would like to say thank you to the volunteers and city workers for the Fourth of July. Hear great things from that, from, from those activities, and thank you to everybody who gave up, participated in that day of celebration, so thanks. And also thanks to all the volunteers that, and, that helped for the Drums Across Kansas last night. That was a spectacular show. Looked like the stadium had a good crowd. It was, it was amazing. So those of you who missed that, that's put on your calendar because it's, it's a good one. And thanks again to everybody who worked and to put that on. Thanks to you, Tabitha and Molly for, I know there was a lot of lead up to that, so... It's a, becoming a marquee event for our community, and I think that's great. I don't have anything else.
Okay, well, I just have a few things. It's everybody's favorite time of season, almost. August 1st, we'll begin our free chlorine, uh, water. So we'll be putting wa, chlorine into the water as part of the treatment process. We do that once a year. And there's some chemistry involved with that. I don't know the, the full and an out on it, but I do know that your water will be tasting and smelling like it's got chlorine in it. It does, but it is 100 percent safe. We do this for a period of about three to four weeks, and then, then we'll go back to normal. Incidentally, I did talk to Kurt today, and there is a possibility that this could be the very last pre-chlorine run that we do because we've come across some new information that we're researching that may, may allow us not to do free chlorine in the future, but we won't promise anything at this point. We're still looking into that as a potential option. But we will begin the free chlorine this year on August 1st, so if you do smell that or taste that, or you get calls, as the case may be, that's, that's what the answer is to that. We have notified all of our major institutions, particularly the healthcare providers and nursing homes, so that they're aware, as well as anybody else that utilizes water for their processes or operations, that it would be critical for them to know. We've also been, we've also had the opportunity to be awarded a wildland fire apparatus from the United States Military, United States Army. We paid $68 for the vehicle, and it's a very large vehicle that we will fit with a tank and we'll paint it up for a wildland fire apparatus for a department. Currently, it's sitting in the fire bay over here in, in a...
$68?
We paid 68 bucks for it. Yeah, it's, it's part of the grant, it's not really a grant program, it's really a surplus program. They have X number of, of these apparatus units that they get rid of every year, and we put our name in the hat pretty early, and we're, we're selected for one this year. So you pay 68 bucks, you get a truck, but you have to modify it, you have to put a tank on it, you have to paint it. They are camouflage right now. We have to do some other modifications, like add radio, add a light bar, different things like that. So we'll, we'll have several thousand dollars into it when it's all done. I think it's closer to $20,000 or more. But we get the truck for 68 bucks. So it's a pretty good deal, all things considered. Got to reuse a vehicle and have something that we wouldn't otherwise have. So that's currently in the bay, and they're getting everything fitted out for that, so we can get that ready to go for, for use in the near future. The Oil Hill Rocky Road project, that was a street project that we were constructing in large part because of BG Products warehouse expansion in the industrial park. That project is complete, so if you're driving up in that area, you can see our new road and, and that road will be, it's ready to serve BG once their product, project is, is completed. Also, if you're out and about and you swing by the library park, you'll notice that the new playground equipment has been installed. The pad for the basketball courts has also been installed, and my understanding is the only thing that's remaining on those park project, and on that specific park project is the installation of the two basketball goals, and then that, that project will be pretty, pretty much done. Park pro, the playground equipment is pretty nice. I think there's been a lot of good use out of that already. My understanding is people have been out there and they've seen it and been using it, so that's, that's a good thing. So next time you're out and about, you might take a look at that. Um, and, let's see, oh, and the other project that we have going on that's got people's attention is the tennis court project. That project is still on schedule, and provided we don't have any weather, we should have all, well, we should have at least three of the courts, if not all of them.
Four of the courts by the end of August. The concession restroom facility may lag a little behind. The goal was the end of August to have the courts playable for the school district.
So right now, you'll go up there and what we're needing to do is relocate, or, yeah, relocate the Westar utilities that were overhead. Westar was out trenching underground paths, so we're going to put those utilities underground. We're going to put a conduit in the ground for future Cox expansion if they need it. We're trimming some trees to get that all ready to go. Two of the court pads are poured. They've put some tension onto them. They got to tension those up every so many days. There's a 28 day cure period. So it's starting to come together. It's looking pretty nice. There's still obviously a lot of work to be done. You might see some large mounds by the pads. Those will go away. That's really filled dirt, so they can go back and close up some trenches and do some different things as the project continues. The improvements to 10th Street, the parking, as well as the bus parking to the south there, those are all been completed. And so we're kind of waiting on the coles to be finished up, so we can continue the two remaining pads and get that ready to rock and roll. Incidentally, before I went to camp last week, I had a pretty good meeting with the pickleball group that's here in town. We have about, well, over 15 people came to city hall, probably more than that even, and they were very ecstatic about hearing that we were going to have two courts available for pickleball. And after that meeting, I consulted with the school district, and we're going to go ahead and install opportunities for, well, netting structures into the tension courts, as well as paint two additional courts, so we will have a total of four pickleball courts when this thing is all said and done, because there was, there's a lot of demand for, for pickleball opportunities, and so the school district didn't have any problems with that. We'll have, so we'll have four tennis courts. We'll have four hybrid tennis pickleball courts to make the whole thing, to make the whole thing work. So the pickleball courts will be a different color. The lines will be a different color than the tennis courts, tennis court lines, so there will be a differential, so people know what they're playing. So it'll be a pretty good project, I think, when it's done.
What was the final number on KGV's bill to move that line?
When we were able to work with KG and A, Westar.
Westar.
Yeah. So the city is, is doing the trenching via the contract, and they're relocating it.
Good.
No expense.
No expense. Okay.
There are some of the tree trimming bills that we've agreed to pick up.
What was the, all cutting the pine trees down on the west side?
There's new overhead on that side.
Yeah, in order to go underground, they had to bring in some overhead, and that required some trimming trees.
Over the, over Main Street?
It will go over Main Street and then it'll run, and it'll go and feed like the auto repair shop there, the hotel, that stuff on the west side. I can tell you, they've been, they've been great partners to work with through this project. They, they've stepped up. They, they see this as an improvement and asset to our community. Really appreciate what they've done to help us, as, as well as Cox Communications.
But we weren't expecting them to be that nice to us, so I mean, I, yeah.
They had a bunch of guys out there today.
Working on it.
Twenty guys out there.
That's awesome.
And, and so, shooting for Friday, power switch, so they make the new stuff hot and kill out the old. There may be some disturbances to power.
So is that to the north? That three-phase pole line that goes north and south through the east side of the park, is that going away then?
Yeah, it's kind of through the middle of the park.
Yeah, right through the middle of it. That's all going away?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be right over the top of some test courts and...
That, that pole, is that pole stayed that's next to those courts?
No. It, it, all the overhead poles are going away inside the park. There, there will be one that we're keeping for security lighting, but everything else will be...
But, but it'll be fed from underground. All ready overhead lines do it.
And one nice thing, too, we were able to, over the years, we had a, about, well, we had three different meter locations for that park just running various things here and there. We had to consolidate that.
Awesome.
Good. Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, the only other thing I was going to say, after I made my decree on the spray parks, we had no incidents. Kevin has reported, so I don't know if it worked or not, but so far, so good. Everything is running smoothly, the spray parks. We could not add any, buddy attempt to plug the drains to create a nice little small pool, so...
What about the compost pile?
The compost pile has not been compliant thus far. Brad continues to review that and look at that, and we may be shutting that down soon, but, at least for a period of time, but we haven't made a decision on that yet.
I caught a guy in there about a week ago. No, I didn't have to, because I wrote his tag down. I go, what are you going to sit and write your tag down? I'm going to turn you in for throwing those bags in there. He went and picked them up.
I will say that there has been a number of tickets issued by the police department with respect to illegal dumping, and Brad has been down there and, I don't know if he's actually issued tickets or if he's given hard warnings, but we have written several tickets to folks down there, so...
Okay, question. Brad can write a citation?
I don't know if he can or not.
He could. I don't think he has it allowed.
Oh, I didn't know he had that.
Municipal codes.
I didn't know he had that, though.
Okay.
I'll tell you, if we lose that, because the landfill, used to, you could take limbs and stuff out there for free. It's 10 bucks now.
Is it?
Yep. I don't care if you got a trailer load or the back of your car, it's 10 bucks.
So the bigger the trailer, the better the deal?
If you got a big old trailer.
And that is all I have.
Okay. It gets to the end of our agenda, except for one thing. Our next meeting work session, do we have that scheduled?
Yes. So because we canceled the one last week because of attendance and I wasn't able to be here for the Wednesday that we normally meet, we're going to have that meeting next week on the 24th, regular time, so it'll be a five, that'll be a five o'clock meeting on Wednesday, the 24th. And then we'll also have a study session on the 31st at five o'clock. So we're just going to do two back-to-backs. Normally, we'd have one week off because of the, we have an extra week this week, this month, I mean. So because we need to go over the budget one more time, we'll have that next week at five o'clock, and then we'll have one on the 31st at five, if that works for everybody.
24th and 31st.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. At five o'clock.
Which one's a due?
I believe the thirty-first.
Okay, thank you. Confirm those dates. Anything else for the good of the cause? If you know, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Five to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you.